Roll call?
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here. I almost answered when you said that. Okay, next, the presentations. We don't have any of those. New employees, none of those. Oral comments from the public. Anybody have any oral comments? Our public.
Good evening. Sue Long, we are moving our Lent Construction Office tomorrow. Our phones are going, so it's chaos, but it's happening. And so I would like to invite the council, the staff, and the general public to our chamber meeting on January 18th because with everything that's going on, we might as well throw in a party. So I hope to see some of you guys come and see what we've been working on for the last couple of years.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, consent calendar. We, on the consent calendar, we have city council meetings, report of divert, divert, dispersments, proclamation of the city council confirming the existence of local emergency due to earthquake damage, December 20, 20th, 22, edible food recovery, regional participation. Anybody want to pull anything?
I would like Dean, please.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Um, that with regard to the... Sorry. With regard to the financial impact, it shows that with the report, the city would be committing approximately $11,000 toward the development of the edible food recovery program costs. And I know that includes that we included $45,000 to cover, you know, the costs out of Fund 210. Are any of those costs or is that Fund 210 a reimbursement from the state? Or is this a mandate that, again, is not paid for, but we have to do it?
Yeah, so, so you're, there are no funds coming from the state. The, the revenue in Fund 210 is coming from solid waste fees that are paid to the city. So ultimately, that's being paid by the ratepayers who have solid waste service within the City of Fortuna. So there's $45,000 budgeted. We knew that we'd have some compliance projects that we'd have to work on. And this project is, you know, it's going to, the effort to do the food recovery requirements for SB 1383, they're going to require coordination with local food, rest, food recovery organizations. They're going to require, you know, the development of the programs. They're going to all require, there's a number of items in the staff report, but really, uh, that's one second. So it's the, it'll be the, the piece that we're looking for, the contribution for today is the development of the Food Recovery and Capacity and Compliance Assessment Plan, the Public Outreach and Education Plan, the Food Recovery Communication and Tracking System for Edible Food Generators, and then importantly is the compilation and recordkeeping of the inspection reports, and then identifying the budget and long-term strategy for funding the edible food recovery. So this is going to be an ongoing amount of work that's required. This is, it's the initial step to contribute to the county who's agreed to take the lead on that food recovery effort.
And again, this is, uh, this is something that the city has to pass on the cost to the ratepayers.
Right.
And so ultimately, it, it comes down to taxpayers and ratepayers that will be picking up this cost. Again, it's an example of the state requiring programs that they have no intent or interest in paying for, but require us as a city and us as ratepayers and taxpayers to, to fund it. And it's, it's got to stop somewhere along the line. I don't know where, but I certainly hope the League of California Cities will, you know, step up at some point and, and hopefully say enough is enough and, you know, end this kind of, these kinds of mandates. That's all I have. I rent.
Sorry, my iPad won't work. So then, do we have a motion?
I'm done. I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor? Do, do we do a roll call for that?
Did you take public participation? I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, do we have any public comment on? No? Do we do roll call or is that?
You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay. Let's see, city council business. Did you get it? Thank you. Okay, the first item is the second reading for the Organic Waste Disposable Ordinance Revision. We have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trent. This is the second reading of, the staff is recommending, recommending that the council hold a public hearing, conduct the second reading, and adopt ordinance 2022-757, revising Chapter 8.14 to the Fortuna Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Regulations that Implement and Enforce CalRecycle Organics Regulations and SB 1383 Compliance. And the change included in this amendment is the implementation date from January 1st, 2023 to July 1st, 2023. And so a presentation was made at the council meeting on December 19th. We reviewed this ordinance and, and the first reading was conducted on December 19th. The second reading would make the changes to the Fortuna Municipal Code.
Any council have any questions?
Yeah. Have we gotten an updated timeline on the bins and the trucks?
No, but one, we, we have not. We're expecting that those will be available by July. One of the things that's, there, there, it's likely that the council will have to revisit the timelines in the future. One of the things that's really going to take a long lead time is, is the Humboldt Waste Management Authority. They'll be developing the tipping floor in the equipment to process that organic waste. And currently, we think that's going to take longer than July 1st. It's likely we'll have to come back and amend this more specifically. After our meeting on the 19th, when we extended this to the, the compliance date to July 1st, 2023, or when we introduced the first reading, we had a call from CalRecycle to work on our compliance action plan. And so we rolled out, we, we worked with them to identify what we thought were more realistic dates. So this date that we're amending the municipal code to, to include right now of July 1st, we will likely end up extending this again, but we'll have more specific dates. There will be more progress on some of the projects that are required for compliance in the future. So this is really just to really kick the can down the road and not have, you know, the community have to come in compliance until we have the facilities and the means to be able to do that. So a big piece is going to be updating the franchise agreement with Recology. The second piece is going to be developing some of the programs, like we discussed a moment ago. The food recovery piece is going to have a long timeline, and then also converting the HWMA tipping floor. So those, those items are probably going to be out beyond July 1st. So what this does is it puts it out to, to July 1st, and I expect that we'll have some more specific timelines and perhaps a staggered set of timelines that I'll, I'll bring back to the council at a later date, probably in May or June.
Rebuilding a recovery floor from scratch, then we might be good to get anything by January 1st.
Well, and what they're, they're doing is repurposing their existing tipping floor that they had for recycling. So they have a tipping floor there, but it's some of the equipment that HWMA will need to be able to collect and process that waste that'll have to come in. And, and so there will be longer timelines with that.
And I think they just redid that floor, too. So it's probably in better shape than starting with the used ones.
And, and that was the thinking, and it's already permitted for that use instead of coming up with a whole new facility that needed to be permitted. So I know that they're working on that, and that's another area where we'll be bringing it back to council. They'll be looking for some level of participation in HWMA. And currently, the city's not a member, and so that'll be a facility that the city would rely on for its compliance with SB 1383. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to SB 1383, and, and we're trying to chip away at those and make a plan, working regionally with HWMA, with the county collaboratively. And so we'll continue to do that. It makes more sense than the city trying to take on each one of the elements independently and essentially duplicating the efforts that will have to happen by every jurisdiction in the county.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Anybody in the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. We have a motion?
I'll admit, the motion didn't back second reading and adopt ordinance 2022-757 by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Sorry, that's good. I'm moving on to the next item here.
Ordinance 20...
Please.
2022-757, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title 8, Health and Safety of the Municipal Code by revising Chapter 8.14, Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, our next item is a public hearing, first reading to consider repealing and replacing Title 15, Building and Construction, Division 1, General, Chapter 15-10, Building Codes with the 2022 California Building Code as mandated by the California Building Standard Commissions and Department of Housing and Community Development Ordinance 2023-758. We have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trent. I'll just want to indicate that Gary Goad, who helped prepare the staff report, our building official here, is here. So I was going to give a brief overview of what the action is, and then Gary will be here to help answer any questions. So I'll be very brief. Most of the information is laid out in the staff report, but really, this is a required change to the city's code to be able to reflect the, the incorporation of the state building codes. And next slide, please. And so on your presentation, you can see the various portions of the building code, the California Building Code that are required to be amended into the city's municipal code. And those include administrative code, California Building Code, residential code, electrical code, mechanical code, California Plumbing Code, Energy Code, Historical Building Code, Fire Code, Existing Building Code, Greenback Building Standards Code, reference, referenced standards code, and the Uniform Housing Code. So those are the, those are the elements that would be incorporated into the city's municipal code. Next slide, please. And so there are, there is ability for local amendments, and so there's specific administrative portions which are included in the local amendments. And primarily, they allow for judgment and some exemptions as determined by the building code for some of the different portions of, of the California Building Code. And those include the permit expiration date, engineering review, the ability to waive a, a boundary survey or, or, or circumstances that allow work without a permit, or what the fines would be, required fees or a violation process. So those aren't changing from what the city's incorporated in the past. Those will remain the same, but those are the local amendments that vary from the California Building Code. And then there's a few items, you know, I thought I'd just highlight a few items, and there's a lot of detail here, and these are only just a few of the requirements. But some of the more interesting changes that are in the 2022 code are, you know, and these are just a few. Our building official provided me with a whole page list of all of these. But one of them is a lot of building construction now, people are starting to use repurposed shipping containers. So in the new building code, there's some provisions for the, how you review the use of building and ship, of, of repurposed shipping containers. And then also, there's requirements for new buildings to be electric-ready, as I think a lot of the councils are aware. There's a big effort on behalf of the state to start reducing greenhouse gases, and a, and a big part of that strategy is, is going to be by incorporating renewable energy such as solar and converting a lot of electric, converting appliances that are currently gas to electric. So some of the new building codes require homes to be electric-ready and have the ability to be wired, have the requirement to be wired for heat pumps or electric dryers or electric cooking appliances. And then there's more stringent efficiency standards for different equipment. So, you know, specifics on, you know, for things such as use of dimmable light switches and things like that. So there's a whole variety of more stringent energy efficiency items. Again, Gary could go through that with you, but one of the other things I thought was interesting is that there will be required dedicate, dedicated circuits from, for certain portions of the home, you know, so bedroom, water, you know, hot water, things that could run off a battery. So to have certain circuits that are identified that could run off a battery source. So really, to have the homes wired and ready for a battery system or solar, those are things that we're seeing that are being incorporated into this building code that haven't been there in the past. And then there's some changes to the requirement for PV sizing, for photovoltaic sizing. There, there's already a requirement that there be photovoltaic systems on new homes, but then this, they've done some changes to the sizing. And then there's other various mechanical and plumbing requirements and changes. But those are some of the things I just wanted to highlight that are new. And again, if you want to know more about those or some of the other changes that are in there, Gary's here and he could answer those questions. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt ordinance 2023-758, an ordinance of the City of Fortuna repealing and replacing Title 15 Buildings in Construction, Division 1, generally Chapter 15.1 of the building code for the, of the Fortuna Municipal Code with the 2022 California Building Codes. And this would be the first reading, and I believe we would be, it's not in the staff report where we'd be continuing this. Oh, is it? Okay.
Will be continued to January 17th. Council have any questions?
Yes, I do. Interestingly enough, of course, the state is moving us to energy efficiency, electric service, but as everybody's power was out after the 6.2 earthquake, that became a little bit difficult. Eventually, if you have a generator or need to replace a generator, you're not going to be able to buy a gas generator here in California. So you're going to have to have solar, which the CPUC has made even more difficult in their recent ruling and made it more expensive for anybody to install solar. So it just keeps getting better and better. I do have a question with regard to the, um, building code itself. And I don't know if Gary can, can answer this, but going to page six, and changes to, to City of Fortuna's adopted Chapter 1, Division 2 Administration. Bottom of the page, and it starts out, "Every permit issued shall expire two years from the date of issuance. Every permit shall expire by limitation and become null and void if the building or work authorized by such permit is not commenced within 180 days from the date of such permit." And it continues on for several more lines. My, my question is, what is the difference between the permit expiring and every permit shall expire by limitation and become null and void?
Well, when you, when you issue the permit, you know, void, that means there's no activity on the permit, on the project. It doesn't take too much to keep that thing going, you know, digging dirt, just some sort of work, as long as we, we know what you're actually doing. A lot of times, we get phone calls, you know, because we just don't want that job to go abandoned on there. And they do. On occasion, they'll have a job that just completely stops. So it's just one of those things, can we avoid out a job? Yeah, we can. We don't, we don't, that's what we try to do here, try to figure out what goes on. Because sometimes the, even the 180 days, you get the, I use that phrase, life kicks in sometimes.
Exactly.
And people just automatically stop. And yes, we do have projects out there that have been issued that are going on four years. People come into the weekend and work on their houses or after, or financial issues that just kind of came to a stop because you couldn't afford it. We just work with them and try to get it done. We're, we're small enough to, to be able to be that, that small neighboring town that we can still do that without having it so hardcore where we're actually trying to keep everybody on that thing.
Well, that's, that's good, because six months seems like a pretty short period of time. And, and life happens, like you said, and what we've seen in the past, something like COVID kicks in and, and, you know, people have a difficult time even getting through the front door of City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
But I see no exception there that's built into the code. If you do have an issue or a issue where City Hall is closed, or there's some issue with the city, or whatever, you name it, that can't be extended.
Yeah, we don't run a super hard running on 180 days, and we know exactly what's coming up. With our new tracking system stuff, we'll actually have that, which will actually make it easier for us so we can give you that phone call. Like you said, we work with people here. We don't try to, we don't try to make it harder. We get phone calls that, you know, we have some people that, that they read that line. They, they read all the little small dots, and they, they call us the day before, the week before. We get those. And then we have other people that forgot all about it and stuff. We get phone calls, we have contractors that are building projects that go over that 180 days all the time, and they have a man, and they're, they're on there working on their projects. Not all contractors of us build a house in three months. Some contractors build a house in two years. And then I have homeowners that build homes in four and five years.
And so the code gives the city the leeway, the discretion?
I do have a leeway in there where I can extend you out and, and extend it. When it went from UBC and it went to the international codes, it only allowed me to have one time. That changed years ago. And it allows, as long as the city's willing to work with it, and as long as they have a good reason, it just hasn't been truly abandoned. And at that point, I can keep on extending. If you keep on progressing with your project, we pretty much go ahead and we extend it when we go along with you.
Okay. And that keeps us in compliance with the state codes as well?
We are 100% in compliance with the state.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Yeah, open public comment. Anybody from the public want to comment?
Sue Long, on that section that Mike just read, is there anything that you can put in there that says the building official has the authority to make those extensions so that it's not just a cut and dried, this ends on this after 180 days or after two years? Because there definitely, we waited on the house for quite a while because when all the building materials spiked just as we got our permit, we let it sit. And so there was a lot of reasons that people might do that. And it would make sense if you had that in the code that the building official has the authority to, blah, blah, blah.
It is in the building codes right now. It says the building official has the authority to extend.
It says that when that section, but Mike was just reading?
Within the building codes. These, some of these are amendments, but there's sections that are, that aren't in here. They're within the building code.
Okay.
So it's in there.
It's actually in the building code, but not in the city portion that we are talking about.
Not the city portion we have amended.
Why wouldn't we make them match?
So you would have to take another section. We have to put it in there and actually do that.
It's like adding one or two sentences, and then they match, and then people aren't going to flip out. Just my suggestion, my comments from the contractor's point of view. And also in there, there's a section, under Section F, I think it is, I didn't bring my packet. I don't have to anymore. And it talks about the fines if you don't get a building permit, and it talks about six months imprisonment. And I just think that's silly, and that shouldn't be in there. We're not going to send anyone to jail for not having a building permit. So why do we write that? Anyway, that's it.
That might be part of the law.
That is part of the law that's in there.
I think, maybe just a question, Gary?
Yes.
To further the public from the comment, if that's okay. Mayor Trent?
Yes.
You know, so if you look at Section B, you know, there's a section, adding that exception, if the council wants to do that, we could probably propose language and incorporate it in here today if the council felt like they wanted to add that.
Adding the, the what?
Yeah, it, I think if we were going to add an exception by the building official, I could say something like, "The building official may consider the waiver of this requirement under California..." Let's see. We'd have to think about it, but really, if, we'd have to think of what the circumstances are that the building official would waive it. But I think we could add an exception to that that would allow the building official to waive it if the property owner can demonstrate their intention and their ability to proceed with the project.
Probably, I liked Sue's idea. Whatever the state code says that gives you that ability, that leeway, that might be the appropriate language to put in there.
What you're saying is put the exact same language that was, that's in the building codes into, into this?
Just whatever, whatever part.
These are, these are just a little bit of amendment to the wording that was there. And most of it was to give us, to give us leeway so we could actually bend either to the stronger or to the weaker portion. It depends on what it was.
Well, the, the issue I see is if a contractor comes in and sees that then, and it, it, it gives you a little bit, you know, it, it gives you some peace of mind that things aren't going to go sideways in 180 days if the city, you know, has an issue or COVID, you name the, the problem or the issue.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking if you take the wording out of the state code, whatever that is, that gives you that leeway and still stay in compliance, that might be the wording to put in there.
Yeah, so if the council wants to see something like that, my recommendation would be that we bring this back, we continue the meeting until the next council meeting, and then we bring back a revision and have, and redo the first reading and put some language in there for that purpose.
So Gary, is this, this 1510.015A, this portion that we see in the staff report, is this just a snippet of what the actual code is?
Yep.
So the actual code somewheres down there has that?
Yep.
You just insert that in there, you know, for the next staff report so we can see it?
So does the council want to continue this to the next meeting and add that?
I think it'd be good to see the actual wording.
Gary, you know, if, if, Gary, if you can indicate right now where, where in the code it allows you to extend that?
It'd be under the same section, 105.5. Could be 105.5.6. I mean, .6 or, or .4 that actually has that little bit in there.
You don't have that wording right in front of you, though?
No, I'd need that to book in front of me.
Are we on a timeline to get this ordinance passed?
The state has already adopted in the building code portion of it. We are, formality, we just adopted in, but our main portion is to adopt in the administrative portion, how we operate within each jurisdiction. So the state actually does the, the building code portion of it. So as of, you know, the first, we're, we're under the new building codes automatically.
But we're adopting our local?
Well, it's pretty much the local amendment, how we operate.
We could, probably everybody would like to see it in there just for peace of mind, especially for local contractors and business people.
All right.
Okay, we'll continue this item to our next meeting.
We can do it formally in a motion, please?
Okay.
Yeah, can, continue the item to January 17th for first reading with the revised recommendations.
I'll sub move.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, city managers report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Just a few items. First, I'd like to cover the upcoming schedule. Our next council meeting will be January 17th at 6:00 PM. Our next planning commission will be January 10th, also at 6:00 PM. Our next, our next Measure E meeting will be January 18th at 2020, uh, January 18th at 5:30 PM. But one of the things we're looking at is potentially rescheduling that time. It does co, conflict with one of the chamber mixers, so we are considering rescheduling that meeting. So that, that may be subject to change. Our next RONER Community Recreation Park District meeting is on January 4th at 2:30 PM. So a few things to report. Since the last meeting, as I think most of the councils are aware, we had the earthquake on December 20th and then an aftershock on January 1st. There was quite a bit of damage that was caused, and a significant staff effort was spent. The primary damages city facilities included several water leaks on city water mains that required immediate repair. We had a great response from our utilities crew. They showed up at 3:00 in the morning shortly after the earthquake as, as, as well as our police department. They responded and provided really just protection for the community. really just protection for the community when their, the power was out and so many businesses were damaged. So, you know, I was here at that time and it was really nice to see everybody come in without being called out. So we had a great response from our staff. Everybody, everybody showed up and, and started doing, um, what they needed to, to, you know, take care of their responsibilities. Uh, you know, one of the other failures was, uh, there was a generator failure, our auxiliary generator up on Forest Hills. There's a booster pump station to pressurize those homes there. Uh, when that generator started up, there was a problem with the cooling system. So that's one of the, and the generator didn't function. So that's one of the reasons that Forest Hills was out. There was a water leak that led to a sinkhole on Valley View, so that took several days to repair. Again, that was our utility crews and general services crew. Um, I'd also say that our general service crew, they came out and there was a lot of debris cleanup, a lot of glass on the sidewalks. So they were out assisting businesses with boarding up their windows and cleaning up glass on the sidewalks. And Bob Nat, our general services superintendent, I think he might've been the first one there on that and his crew was there shortly after. Um, one of the bigger pieces of damage will probably be more expensive, but it doesn't require immediate repairs. There was, uh, the subsidence on Fortuna Boulevard in the recently installed, uh, along the whole area. We're along Hillside Creek where a large metal plate culvert was recently installed. So that area of roadway sunk about six inches across the entirety of the roadway. So there's a dip you might notice when you go through there now, but we did have the engineers on that project come down and they looked at it and they determined that the culvert, you know, there's no signs of deformation or potential failure there. So it's really going to be surface restoration of the roadway, but you'll notice a dip there now. But that'll be a somewhat expensive repair. Um, there is minor cosmetic cracking, uh, in the River Lodge and the Police Operations Division. So some of the buildings, you know, plaster, drywall, non-structural things. And then the Monday Club, uh, you may have noticed if you've driven by there, the chimney on the Monday Club separated from the building was hanging out. So we had to cordon off a portion of the, um, the roadway and sidewalk. We were, we were concerned that that large chimney could fall, that brick chimney and brick facade could fall. And so we have a construction crew out there on Forest Account that is demolishing the chimney today. And so we brought it down to a level that's safe. Let's see, uh, there's several, there's a lot of damage to private structures, um, as I'm sure much of the council is aware. Um, a lot of businesses with broken windows, items thrown from shelves and broken. And it really came at the worst time of year for our businesses. The week before Christmas is one of those big shopping weeks. And I know that it, you know, from speaking to some of our business owners, they were just, it was, it was a tough blow for them at a really, really bad time. And so we just want to be able to recognize that. Um, you know, we are putting together damage estimates for the work, for the damaged city facilities. And then the county has set up a website for, um, business owners to be able to report the damage to their businesses and for private property owners. I did receive a call just before this meeting too, that Cal O E S, um, is looking to set up, uh, a office here in Fortuna to deal with, uh, to, you know, to help process, um, low interest loans for businesses and residences that were affected. So that's not quite finalized yet, but we're hoping that we'll see some movement from the state. And talking to Supervisor Bushnell, she was here. I, she, she reported early and she spent a lot of time in Rio Del and Fortuna and really played an instrumental role in helping coordinate with, um, the County Office of Emergency Services and helping to coordinate the shelter that was happening, letting us know what resources were available and really was a great conduit for information and what resources were available. So I really commend Supervisor Bushnell for her commitment. I talked to her on the first as well after that earthquake and she jumped in the shower and she reported to Rio Del. Fortunately, we didn't see as much damage in Fortuna from the January first earthquake. But I, I just want to reiterate that she's done an excellent job staying in touch and helping to convey which, which resources are available. Um, the city, uh, the city provided a shelter at the Fireman's Pavilion. We were fortunate to have a P G N E gen- uh, donated generator that was there in the event, um, for the purposes of P S P S. But when this power outage came, it was great that we had it and Red Cross was able, able to set up a shelter there and we had power. So, um, I, coincidentally, our contract ended with P G N E on January, uh, or December thirty first. So they came and removed the generator. So let's hope we don't need it during this next storm. But I did talk with P G N E and I think if we need to get a generator there and, and use that for a shelter in the future, that we'll find a way to take care of that. So that, that's really, it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work, um, to continue to, to really kind of catalog the damage and try to recover what we can. Um, our Public Works Department, uh, submitted our initial damage estimate, revised, updated initial damage, damage estimate to Cal O E S who will be forwarded on to the State Office of Emergency Services. And they are planning on being here Thursday or Friday this week and they'll want to review the sites and provide assistance and, showing the city what we need to do in order to get reimbursements for some of those things that are reimbursable. And so we're hoping that up to seventy-five percent of the city's costs for the response, um, will be, will be able to recover some of those dollars. So I'll keep the council posted on that. I will say that our new, um, Fortuna Business Improvement District Administrator has really been making a lot of progress. She's been getting out, getting to know a lot of the business owners in downtown Redwood Village and Strong's Creek. And I've really asked her to try to do what she could to connect with folks there and, and get people interested and represented on the advisory committee. And so I think we have five applications now. And so there's a very good chance we'll be able to, um, have those appointees at the next council meeting. I know that they'll be forwarded on to Mayor Trent to review and make a recommendation to council, but I'm excited that we'll be able to get, um, that advisory committee up and running. She's initiated our social media accounts. Um, she's putting information out on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. She's taken, she's developed an F bid webpage that's now hosted on the city website. And she has a presentation really with a background of what the Business Improvement District is and how it's funded. All the way through, you know, draft bylaws and, and, um, and ultimately a, a list of ideas of, you know, what the bid be, could be doing to support our businesses. So it's my hope that she'll really be able to make it, um, a fun and interesting experience and get people engaged in the part of helping business instead of the adminis- instead of having it be a heavy administrative lift, as it seemed like it was with the former incarnation of the Business Improvement District. So, you know, let's try to focus our time and effort on how do we help these businesses and, and bring those ideas that will do that. So I'm excited and I have every, I have confidence that she'll be able to, to do that and get the right folks involved. So as soon as we get those appointees, we'll be able to schedule the first meeting of the advisory committee and get that going in earnest. Um, one other thing that really happened last week, uh, Caltrans contacted me and they have a program with Clean California where they've been putting dumpsters around the community and trying to, you know, provide a way for people to, you know, to have free garbage disposal. You know, have events for free garbage disposal to try to limit what's being deposited on roadways. But I think when the earthquake came, they really, um, wanted to expedite their program and make sure that that was available for folks. So, um, I, we signed an agreement with Caltrans to provide two hundred vouchers to our local residents to have free disposal. They came down today and handed out all two hundred. They gave some to our code compliance staff so they could hand those to folks that we knew in particular had a problem. But, um, you know, it's just one more thing that, you know, had the, the state came in and I was really pleased that they were able to provide that help. And I think they handed out all of those vouchers by probably around noon today. And so people were really interested in that. The chamber helped advertise that. Caltrans put it on their website. We put it out on the city website. But hopefully that helps people who ended up with waste and debris from, um, the earthquake as well as other people who might just have that accumulating. So that happened today. And one of the things that I did was sign the contract with them. So, um, Recology will invoice the city and then the city will invoice Caltrans and get reimbursed. So with that, that concludes my staff report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Um, do you know the locations for the dumpsters?
So there's no dumpsters in, in this instance. What they did was hand out vouchers so people could take it directly to the transfer station.
Okay.
Right? And when they initially inquired, they asked about placing dumpsters. And I said, well, wait, why do we want to place dumpsters when we already have a transfer station? Because that puts a lot of responsibility on the city. Then we have to man the site. We could be responsible for waste that, you know, might not be allowed and really just wanted to avoid handling it. And so that was one of the things that was unique about this. This is the first time they've done a voucher program. But it made a lot more sense to me to see that go directly to the transfer station instead of a city site.
Okay. Um, and Brendan had emailed me last, a couple of weeks ago with regard to the pod, the, um, Police Operations, um, bid opening and.
Yeah, remind me of the date on that, Brendan. Is it the fifteenth?
It's Thursday, the fifth at three P M.
So this Thursday, the fifth at three P M will be the bid opening. One of the things that we were hearing from contractors, they were having a lot of requests for, from private homeowners to come and look and assess damage. It was a holidays. Um, a lot of local contractors are interested in the project and they just said, hey, if, you know, what we were hearing was it was going to be problematic to try to force that bid to happen. And we didn't want to make more of a problem by having that, uh, you know, happen during that period of time with power outages and people responding to their own emergencies and trying to prepare for the holidays.
Absolutely. So the fifth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next, um, city council reports and we'll start with Councilman Conley.
I unfortunately have not got to go to a meeting yet. The, it was closed for the Christmas holiday, the Monday, so I will be going next month.
Okay, Councilmember Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, since our last meeting, I haven't had any committee meetings. But I do want to give out some shout outs to the different, um, city departments. I mean, it seems like our folks just stepped up and, uh, did the jobs that they, that they needed to do. The utility crews, the police department, uh, they were out there. They had rescued several people that were trapped. Um, the city streets, the, the parks and rec folks, um, got out and.
Sorry.
And they, um, you know, were right on, um, checking, uh, River Lodge, um, the museum, the pavilion, as well as, uh, the Monday Club. So great job for all of our, uh, employees. They just stepped right up. Also for the fire department, they were kept busy all night long. They responded to a lot of different emergencies. They rescued a lot of folks. Um, looked at a lot of, uh, mobile homes that got knocked off their, their, uh, foundations and things. So they did an excellent job. Kudos to, um, Chief Russ Brown and, and his group. Like Merritt mentioned, the, um, Red Cross opened a shelter in the pavilion. And, um, I kept pretty much tabs through the, uh, a couple of weeks there that it was open. Uh, at one point, we had probably close to twenty people spend the night through the weeks. We had lots of people that would stop in either for food, water, um, charge their, their phones or their computers. So they, they did a, uh, excellent job with opening that shelter. And once it closed here, then it reopened in, uh, Rio Del. So they're providing much of the same benefits to the people in Rio Del that were here. And there were people that were served from all over the Eel River Valley as well as Southern Humboldt with the shelter. Uh, I want to really give thanks to, uh, Valley Petroleum from Eureka. They provided gas cards to the shelter to hand out to people from Rio Del, Ferndale, Rio, uh, Scotia, um, for use here at the Renner Station. Um, for a long time, it was the only station open. They had a generator running and Valley Petroleum donated these gas cards, knowing that people would be trying to get to relatives' houses or coming back and forth, um, from their house, uh, that's been condemned or, or red tagged, um, to the shelter. So, um, kudos for, for them stepping up and providing, uh, those gas cards. Um, last, our hearts certainly go out to those people who lost their houses, um, lost their property. And of course, I, I understand that there were two people who, who passed as a result of, um, um, medical attention not getting there fast enough, uh, you know, some, some facet of the earthquake. We're hoping that the new year is a whole lot different than the tw- year twenty-two ended. So I, I wish everybody well. We need to batten down the hatches now because there's a new storm coming in supposedly tomorrow with seventy plus mile per hour winds. And another storm coming in on Saturday, Sunday. So, uh, be prepared. Get your generators ready if you've got, got them and, uh, and I know the city is going to be ready for whatever emergency will come up. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Trent, can I just add a couple of things that I forgot to mention and, uh, Councilmember Losi's comments remind me of? One, I just wanted to say World Kitchen came in. I hadn't heard of them, but they were, I think they're an international nonprofit. But they came in and they paid for food trucks for folks both in Fortuna and Rio Del. And I, I know that a lot of people appreciated that. And there were some other businesses that I think, um, Mayor Trent may point out in her comments that should be recognized, such as Grocery Outlet. But I, I forgot to mention our, our building official and building department. They were out also at three o'clock in the morning. You know, looking at everything from unsafe facades to inspecting. And I just want to remind everybody to please contact the building department. We're seeing a lot of damage to chimneys. And, um, we will work with you to figure out a safe way to get those down and help find contractors. And then we even had our building official cancel his Christmas vacation. He was supposed to go out of town. So their work in a lot of ways is still just beginning. Um, we're still seeing a lot of reports of damage that came in. They went into a house today that'll probably be, you know, there's still damage that is being identified that wasn't reported yet. So this is going to be an ongoing thing, not just still identi- you know, assessing and identifying structures, but then following up with all these permits. And so one of the things that we did is we're sending out some of the new building permits that are coming in to a third party review so we can keep our building official and building inspector looking at the local damage and prioritize that and get that done more quickly. So I just, I forgot to recognize our building department as well for the work that they're doing and they put in some pretty long hours on this as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
I also did not have any meetings, um, so far. But I did want to commend all of the city workers for the work that you did during that earthquake disaster. Um, I know Merritt thanked everybody else, but he was very instrumental in keeping all of us informed. Um, in acknowledging everybody that needed help. I've been talking to a lot of the community members and I have not heard one complaint about any of the service that they received from the city staff, police department, fire department, anybody. Everyone has been very pleased, has nothing but positive things to say. So thank you. I know it was really rough on all of you to put aside your own things that you had to deal with at home until you took care of everything else. So it is appreciated and it is noticed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson? Oh, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Same difference. I just wanted to follow up with something Merritt said earlier about recovery assistance information and the county being the administrator of that. I looked it up and if you go to humboldtgov.org and click on the, there'll be a large icon that says county main page. Click on that. There'll be a ribbon that says current emergency and it'll take you to a page that has resources and information for accessing those and different information for the recovery assistance. So that's something to follow up with. Uh, another thing is, uh, my H cog meeting this month has been canceled. Uh, there is a historical commission that usually happens in January and I haven't heard any more about that. Um, and I'll, I'll give a brief little thing. There was a recognition for Bill Hummel that happened, I know, this last weekend, uh, last Friday. And, uh, Mayor Trent, myself and our previous mayor Long went up there and that's all I'll say. I'll leave some for you.
That's okay. My, my report's going to be easy because everybody's making it for me.
Well, it was an awesome thing. They recognized Bill Hummel for his, uh, service as a veteran plus his community service that he's been a part of. Uh, General Services Superintendent Nat was there as well as, uh, a lot of community members. Fortuna was represented even though this particular recognition happened in Eureka. It was nice and cozy because it was raining and it was, it moved inside. And once you found a place to stand, you couldn't move until somebody else started moving out of the way. So. But I just wanted to say that it was awesome to recognize someone who has been such a large part of our community. And that's all my report.
That was the Humboldt hero recognition.
See, I saved that for you.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I had a meeting last Friday in Rio Del with Senator McGuire and O E S, the Sheriff's Department, Rio Del. Um, I think that was most everybody there to basically go over the damage, the, the services that are available for people. They had a, an, a center set up there that people could go in and get information on different items. Um, we have had to get some information back to them. We'll have another meeting with Senator McGuire this Friday so we can go over more. And we've had another earthquake since then. So there may be some updated stuff. It's important that all the damage, structural damage be reported to O E S because that has, that may depend or make a difference in how much the county can get back and. that may depend, or make a difference in how much the county can get back in reimbursements, and that, we're hoping to get something back for residents, don't know if that'll happen, but we're working on that, and Senator McGuire's really working on that too, and working on temporary housing for the people. Down in Riedel, there's a lot of people that were displaced. Going through Riedel, it was really sad to see all the red tags and the yellow tags on the doors and the houses boarded up. They definitely got hit a lot worse than we did, and that was hard to see as we went through there. Most of my other stuff, my report was all reported, that's, I guess, the good thing about going last is you have less to report. My first two weeks of mayor definitely was not boring, that's for sure. I do actually want to recognize Grocery Outlet too. We were all down here at 3 o'clock in the morning, trying to get stuff taken care of, our crews all came in, everybody was so good to, you know, just step right in and work, and at about 8 o'clock, I started feeling a little hungry, and I'm thinking, we need to feed our, our crew. So I was talking to Merritt about it and, you know, how we were going to get them something to eat with nothing opened, and then, so I called Seth down at Grocery Outlet, and he said, come down and get whatever you need. So I came down there and got enough stuff to make a whole bunch of breakfast burritos, and Kathy and Christina from the Parks Department came to River Lodge, and Jennifer from the River Lodge and I made about 100 breakfast burritos, and were able to feed our, our crew and give them coffee, which they really appreciated. So that was, that was very nice, and when I went back to pay Seth and Stephanie for the food, they refused to take any money, they said this is their community, they donated to Riedel and they donated to us. So I just wanted to thank Grocery Outlet, you know, very much, they donate to our community a lot, they're definitely an asset to our community. So that's all I have to report. That's it, do we, I usually made that motion, so somebody else is going to have to take over.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.